We're just going to get started and when I, when we start the meeting then we'll do roll call and the announcement on the Open Public Meetings Act and we have a what, fourth grade student from Robertson who's going to be doing the pledge for us today. So we can expect her to stop by at some point. So Marcus, do you want to just take it away or Trevor, do you want to lead into this?
Less is more, we're just going to go straight to Marcus.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to get my setup right. But I think everyone, did all of our board members get an opportunity to read or not? Well, you had the opportunity, did you all read the, the chapter from the book? And so what I was hoping for was that we would each have a quote from the chapter that stuck out to you and we're going to start out using this final word protocol where one person will share the quote that stuck out for them. And then the other board members will have one minute each to respond to whatever that first person thought about their quote. So say Martha goes first, Martha will share a specific quote from the book and she will share some thoughts about that quote, how that resonated with her or if there's something she wants to push back on it. And then each board member will have the opportunity to kind of respond to either the passage or what Martha said and then Martha will have the final word at the end. I wanted to go kind of around through that and then if there's something that needs to be illuminated that we didn't touch upon, then I'll do that. And if we have time left, I have some data slides that we want to look at as well. So Martha, could you maybe pick out a passage?
Happy to do that. My passage is on page 101. In the second paragraph, in the middle of the second paragraph, the sentence reads, "In essence, a race-blind approach and strategy encourages educators to blame students for what they bring to school, something over which educators ultimately have little personal control and therefore for which they can feel little responsibility." The reason that stuck out for me was I, I've, I've heard many times that and I've kind of said sometimes that students, students come to us with what they, with the strengths that they have and we, we're not responsible for what's going on in their lives. So it, it shifts the blame, if you, I mean, if you want to use the word blame, it shifts that to the student and subsequently to the family rather than accepting what, what the student brings and moving from that point forward. Ben used to remind us that families don't hold back any of their kids. They send us the best ones that they have. And sometimes the best ones that they have still have deficits that we need to embrace and work on, work with them to move forward.
Thank you. So then I wanted to have other board members respond to either what Martha said or something else that you saw in that same quote. So we're talking about the same passage. Norm?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just reminded of how easy it is for us as educators to just say, well, I, it kind of says it in the text, but it's not my responsibility. This kid comes to us with so many problems or so many deficits that it's like excusing myself for not making progress with this kid. And, and you hear it, you hear it in our language as teachers and it's all listed right down here. All the, it's kind of like excuses and it, it, it allows people to not take the responsibility to, I need to engage with this kid where they are, find their strengths and build on those strengths. And I think that's, that we have to stop doing that as a system to say, well, I just can't deal with poverty or I can't deal with race or I can't deal with these issues. It's not my fault, but it is our responsibility to take kids where they are and, and find their strengths and, and work on their strengths and, and, and their weaknesses too. I mean, find out what their weaknesses are and not lay blame, but just say, this is, this is who I'm, this is who is in front of me today. What am I going to do to help this kid?
Thank you. Raymond?
Sure, I, this, this whole chapter was a kind of a challenge for me, but you know, I'm kind of seen, kind of seen having difficult understanding, you know, that, that teachers blame kids for their, their backgrounds or parent backgrounds and their home situations. I don't know if they're using it as excuse, then a challenge to say, hey, you know, kids are coming in with certain conditions and so forth. It's making it more challenging to, for them to achieve. And so, because I know a lot of teachers that are out there going the extra mile beyond teaching, providing food, you know, extra mentoring and, and extra time, free time, you know, to, to help kids after school programs and so forth. So that's, that's my thought there is that, you know, I'm sure we have teachers that blame the kids, but I know a lot of teachers are doing everything possible that they can to, to help those kids.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, I, I like that first part of it, "In essence, a race-blinded approach." "A race-blind approach and strategy encourages educators to blame students." And I can relate that back to when I was in school, how when we had, when we were integrated from segregation into integration, how white teachers struggled to meet us where we are and to know that we had the ability to achieve, but they used it as the color of our skin, not to apply and not to get to know us and get to understand that we can learn and that we can achieve. And it's a, this whole book is, this chapter here, man, it's, it just brought me back to my childhood and, and, and in high school and knowing that you, you were treated differently because of the color of your skin and the neighborhood you come from and try to make blame. But we forced, we, we had one Caucasian teacher that stepped out of their comfort zone. And then once that happened, there were several more and they were being persecuted, persecuted for doing that because they were spending time with us to get us to, to that point of achievement. And, uh, you know, it's, it's, when you look at how no, no family, no value for education, our families valued education. A natural dislike for reading, we had to read, you know, uh, parents didn't reach out to their kids. Our parents read to us and just, you know, those, those stigmas and breaking those stigmas. And I see that today, that there's stigmas in, within the system still today.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm reminded of a situation or experience I had when my son was in kindergarten. There was, his, his best friend in kindergarten was a little boy who, who spoke monolingual Spanish and his, his family did as well. And I remember being there after school to pick up my son and the, the boy's mother came to pick him up and she wanted, she was very, very interested in her son's education and was trying to speak to the teacher who, who did not speak Spanish. And there was not a, a parapro in the room at, at the time. And so she was trying to ask the teacher what she could do to help her kid. I think he'd gotten the, you know, a sad face on a homework assignment or, or something like that. And the teacher tried her best to communicate, but she, she wasn't able to. I, I was there, so I was able to help with the mother at that time. But the mother shared with me that other times she's had to find two or three people, talk to two or three people before she was able to find someone that could answer her questions. And so she had to try so much harder than an English-speaking parent to get to the exact same information. So she just had to work harder to, to get to it. So that, that Martha's quote reminds me of that, where some groups just have to work a little bit harder to get to the same place as, as others.
Yeah.
Marcus?
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't mean to imply, and if, if that's what folks took from it, it was not my intention.
Martha, hold up, you're going to get the last word.
Okay.
If I'm going to chime in or not on these.
Okay. Sorry.
I'm going to be inconsistent and chime in sometimes at the end and sometimes not. So this time I won't because I think you're going to say what I was going to say. So go ahead, you got the last word.
You got the mind meld thing going on? It was not my intention to imply that all teachers have that sense that, you know, these kids have deficits and I'm not responsible for their deficits. We clearly have more than our fair share of teachers who go the extra mile for their students. And, and I think maybe now more than ever, simply because we're building, we're building within them the mindset that it's, education is an equity-based, should be an equity-based situation where you can't treat everyone equally. And yeah, the other pile. You can't treat everyone equally in order to get this, an acceptable result for all students. So it's, it's kind of like individualized learning.
I think it's a hard, I am going to chime now. I think it's a tough thing because when we look at outcomes for students and they become predictable, where it's the same outcome year after year after year, we can begin to accept it, right? Like it's just something we can't change. And when I, an experiment that I tried with some of the elementary schools, when I started these conversations with them in Yakima was, I would ask the question, here's what Yakima's promise is, that all students, this, that, the other thing. What determines whether we can fulfill this promise or not? And people would say, well, do they speak English? Do they, are they poverty? Are they, do their parents care? Like, we would start naming things completely outside of our control. And it would be hard for me to fulfill a promise that I think is dependent on what other people are doing or not doing. One thing, big learning curve for me coming out to Quincy and now here is when I am trying to engage and work with people who are monolingual Spanish speakers and I don't speak Spanish. I could interpret that as, well, the problem is that they don't speak English or I can interpret that as the problem is that I don't know how to speak Spanish and I should have learned to speak Spanish as a part of my academic experience or whatnot, right? So where do I center the responsibility for addressing the challenge? Is it my challenge to overcome or is it something outside, completely outside of my control? And I think that we have people that have either of those tendencies and it's a natural product of when you're looking at the same, you're looking at the same challenges over and over again and haven't had a real intentional strategy for addressing them. So Norm, what's your passage?
Okay. My passage is on page 107. And it's kind of in the middle of the, of the page above the, the bar, but it says, "So why then were they quick to comment that, quote, 'we don't see color,' unquote, or 'we don't think of you as black,' unquote, once I began to comment on my personal, local and immediate racial experience and inquire about what I perceive to be institutional racial biases for educators, students and families of color, challenging white educators' mythical colorblindness," and so on. And I think what, what that said to me is sometimes even when we're well-intentioned, we'll say things and you hear it all the time. "I don't see color, I can't be racist, I don't see color at all," when really what you're, the hidden message in that is you're denying somebody their own experience. They're experiencing the effects of color or culture or whatever kind of sets them apart from the dominant majority culture. And so when you say, "I don't see that at all," what, in a sense, what you're saying is, "I don't see you." And I think that's why, even though well-intentioned sometimes, those statements reveal something that we need to move beyond. That we really do need to see our kids and see who they are and, and see the experiences that they may have had in their life.
Raymond, what do you think about either the quote or what Norm said?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Pipeltenner. So, you know, I served as administrator in higher education and a lot of the individuals that I supervise were white. And so oftentimes they would say, you know, "I don't see color" when it comes to our students and the programs that I oversaw were support programs offered to, you know, first-generation students, students in poverty and so forth. So they would say that they don't see color, but, and I tried to get to understand them. So they may have a different definition. They, they say, what I understood is that I'm going to accept you as a human being and not based on your color or anything else. Now I'm going to start where you, where you need help. Whatever it is that you come with, whatever background, whatever you need educationally, that's where we're going to start there. We're not going to focus on anything else but to help you be successful. And so that's, that's been my experience with white educators or counselors or advisors in higher education. So it's just a kind of a different, different slant on being colorblind, so.
Thank you. Don?
I knew I was next. In, in reading this and, and, and as Norm picked that out, when they make that comment, "We don't see color" or "We don't think of you as black." I've had individuals tell me that in the first, it brings a red flag up to me. Well, how do you see me? Because for one thing, I am black, right? And just because I'm black doesn't mean I'm no better or no good or, you know, do you see me as, and, and I understand what Raymond is saying, I agree with him some way. It could mean that they're looking at me as a human being, but it's how your actions go beyond that. I've had people tell, I have had people, white persuasion tell me, "Oh, you're not like the other blacks." What you mean I'm not? In what way? Right? And, and, and that brings a red flag because that's telling me that you're not really trying to get to know who I am, right? Because I am black and I do have ways of my brothers and sisters that are my same color, right? I, I, I do have that culture. It's just that I, I may have a different way of carrying myself, right? I carry myself with, in demanding respect to get the respect, right? So I am black, right? And, and when that, when that's said to me, a red flag goes up and then that's when I start educating on that, on that piece.
Thank you. Graciela?
Whenever I see or hear somebody say, "We don't see color" or, you know, "I don't see you as," you know, whatever ethnicity or, or race, that, the, to me, it's always seemed like, like a microaggression. I, I think it's kind of an aggressive thing to say, to completely not acknowledge that someone has a different experience, to be completely unwilling to even try to understand that someone's experience could, could be different than that, than theirs. It's just a very strong statement that says, there's no possible way, any, anything you experience is, is any different than what I, than what I experienced. I, it's a, it's a very interesting, strong statement and I think it shows an unwillingness to even consider that there perhaps could be a different perspective.
Thank you. Martha?
I've, I've heard that. In fact, I've probably said that in my younger years. But when I hear it, when I hear it today, I try to assume, I try to assume good intent on the part of the speaker in that there, they, it's an opportunity to, one, to educate them about, about the term, but it's also an, I don't, I don't believe that when people say that, that they mean it as an insult or that they mean it in a bad way. I think they're just trying to convey the idea that they operate from a race-neutral position. Realizing that, that that's probably not going to work for them in the long run, but I think, I don't, I, I don't believe that people mean that in a derogatory way. They just don't know the difference.
Yeah. I think, Norm's going to get the final word. For me, I have a few thoughts that came to mind as, one is, if you can't see race, you can't see racism. And if you can't see race, you can't see your own racism. And so I, I absolutely agree with what Martha just said, which is that people come to it from a good place, but you just, you miss things. The consequences are different for me as a black man to operate in a world and not see race than someone who their race is not a liability. My race is a liability in some situations. I have to be conscious of it all the time. And one experience that I had last year, when I was doing my internship in Quincy, I got invited to a meeting. I was being mentored, got invited to this meeting, got all suited up to go and attend this meeting as the intern or the superintendent there. And it was a, going to be a session on equity that was going to be held at my high school and I don't really wear suits, as you can see, but I got suited for that and I was feeling ready to go be with the bigwigs. And the facilitator of the meeting was like, you know, told my mentor, you know, "This is a really sensitive topic and we have kind of agreed that we're only going to have people participate who, you know, have been a part of this group all along." And so they told him, he needed to tell me that I couldn't stay there. And I was, I mean, I was devastated. And all day I had to deal with staff members asking me why I was all suited up. And I was like, "I'm supposed to be in this session upstairs," but I got kicked out. And I just felt like, I got kicked out of this meeting because I was black, even though that really had nothing to do with it. Supposedly it was, they wanted their group of people who were, you know, a group that had been working together and they were going to explore this sensitive topic. But by the end of the day, I found out, they didn't notice that one of the other superintendents brought their intern who was white and they didn't see him. They didn't notice that he was a visitor to the group and hadn't been a part of the group the whole, whole time. And it turned out that my race is why I was noticed, my race is why I was sent out, his race protected him from being noticed, his race allowed him to continue to participate. And it was a session on racial equity. So we need to see, we need to see what we're doing, right? And I mean, two superintendents that are very close to me had to push me to come back. They were presenting on work that I had been leading in the Quincy School District. And so they invited me at the end to be a part of that part, which was very difficult to do. And I had to monitor my reaction because I knew if I had the reaction that I wanted to have, I was going to be labeled and I would have, I'm considering what are the future opportunities that I'm going to write myself off if I go off the way I want to go off about what happened this morning by the leader of, for racial equity of this group of superintendents. So, um, yeah, so it's something that people need to be seeing and be aware of and be conscious of what they're doing all the time. Last word, Norm?
Well, I think you hit it on the head right there is, is being conscious. And Graciela used the term "microaggressions" and microaggressions occur all the time. And sometimes we're not aware that they are, but when you build that awareness of how I speak or what I say or who I include or who I don't, that's one of the ways we eliminate racism is to be aware of when those things crop up in our own speech, even unintentionally. And I think the other thing that occurred to me as I was listening to all of you is what people are really sometimes saying is, "I don't see color," but what they, a better way to say that is, "I see color, but I also want to know the person inside you." I want to know the person. I don't want to build my, my impression of you around something that's just what I see on the outside. But who is the person inside? And that's something we all need to do. Who is the person I'm dealing with? And I think that's, that's how, one small way we can move beyond that.
Thank you. Raymond, what's your passage?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Pipeltenner. Before I state, before I read it, I want to say that on that courageous conversations compass, I tend to be more over to the thinking and believing, kind of the upper. So just to give, give everybody just kind of where I'm at. But there's a couple of quotes. One is, and I think I'm going back to Martha's topic, how common, this is some quotes. So, "How common is it for, excuse me, the topic of race to surface during an examination of achievement data of students of color or indigenous students?" And someone to say, and, and I'm going to put my own things in here. So as board members or as a board member, we've, we've dealt, we've been in meetings, tons of meetings discussing data. And so some of the things I've heard is, well, it's all the, the disparities in achievement are due to the, the change in standardized testing, which happened a couple of years ago. Changes in the standards, change in leadership, poverty, you know, leadership or language. I anticipate next year, we're going to be looking at our data and saying, wow, that the pandemic, the COVID-19 had a great impact. Remote learning, students' access to internet, those type of things. Students not having a, a good quiet space at home to study and so forth. And then he goes on to say, "I recognize race is never the only factor, but that we must consider, that we must consider when addressing the way things are in pre-K to 12 and, and higher education." So this is something I've been struggling with for the last, I don't know, 15 years or so as a board member is, how do we determine when it's race or when it's these other factors, right? And we all know the research that says that, you know, that poverty is a big issue. We're a poor tax school district. We always compare Yakima. We've even gone to Olympia to fight for more resources because the Bellevue's school districts of the state have more resources. We know that more resources a student has, then they're going to perform better. So that's kind of the, I'm I'm just trying to, I've been trying to figure that question out. What, so when is it race and when is it these other factors that affect performance, student performance, and perpetuate those inequities?
Thank you. Don?
Yeah. I, and I agree with some of that, what Raymond is saying about, you know, we look at doing the achievement gap and using data. And and then the testing piece and how it's really not balanced and equitable to all students. And, you know, have testified numerous times on this in Olympia and other places. And just to see that we put more emphasis on that testing and unfairness of it, but why not make it fair for all students? And that, reach that common ground. I was just looking at a piece, and it's just, you know, baffling how we could have all this data and we could screw the data to fit what we wanted to say to make our case, but it's still inequity when you look at it as a whole because you're not really dealing with the underlying issue. Are we educating all students the same way? Engaging them in the same way?
Thank you. Graciela?
You know, that's, Raymond poses an interesting question. I think I've struggled with how to react to and respond to that kind of data when there's, you know, there's always a very good excuse or very good reason for why the numbers continue to be disparate or impact some groups more than others. I'm not sure I have anything other, anything else to share other than it's a challenge to know how to respond and understand that kind of information.
Thank you. Martha?
I would agree that it's, it's a bit of a sticky place to get into this kind of a conversation. But when I think about the challenge of standardized testing, for me, standardized testing is just an example of the structural racism that is incorporated within an education system. The fact that you have questions that are posed that are outside of a cultural norm for any particular population, for me, is just an example of, it's, and I don't, it's not intentional. I don't see it as an intentional, as intentional racism, but it's the structural racism within the education system that prompts those kinds of inequities in a standardized testing system.
Thank you. Norm?
I don't have a lot to say here, except that I think one of the things that kind of came up earlier and threads back through what Raymond said is we sit and look at data for years. We've looked at data for years, some of us, that have been around a long time. And one of the things that's consistent in the data is that black American students, especially boys, do not do well in our system. And for how many years have we gone and just said, "Well, that's just," it's kind of like those excuses we heard at the beginning. "That's the family," or "It's poverty," or whatever. But why is that allowed to continue for so long that we don't seriously address what is going on here? It doesn't, you know, there are obviously people that do survive in this system and bridge the gaps and make progress in our system. But the numbers continue to tell us that certain minorities just don't do well, and why do others do better? And it's not a lack of intelligence. It's people in poverty overcome obstacles. But there's something in our system that we're just not addressing, and we really have to get serious about looking at that. It's not okay. It's not okay to go decades and have the same data come at us over and over and over and over again and say, "Well, we're just going to live with it." And I think that's where I get a little frustrated and angry. And I'm not sure what the answers are, but we need to be looking, what are the solutions to this? Where are there places that are finding the solutions? Even in small, little pockets somewhere, somebody's doing better than we are. And let's find out why.
Yeah, my internet started breaking up on the end of what Norm was saying, so I'm hoping you guys can hear what I'm saying. Are you guys hearing me okay?
Yes, we are.
That's a really powerful question that Raymond posed, is how do we really know when it really has to do with race? And it's a question that I'm always asking myself is, did this, you know, how do we really know? And I think the thing that he pointed out in the quote that, you know, multiple things kind of converge is important to remember. I was, over the weekend, reading about COVID stuff and how, you know, black and Latino individuals are 1.7 times more likely to contract COVID, 2.8 times more likely to die from COVID than whites. And in the article, they made a big deal to say, "It's not because of something about the black people and the Latinos. This is about systemic issues like housing and healthcare and there are things." But the fact that it had to point that out, but the problems in those, the reason you have concentrated segregation in different neighborhoods, concentrated poverty in different neighborhoods, differing access to healthcare, it's all, like, it doesn't matter what the cause is. It's really what the effect is. And we have to go and then ask more questions to figure out what the cause is to eliminate the race-based disparity. I keep calling folks' attention back to the definition that I've been using for equity, which is eliminating predictability and outcomes based on race. If we can predict what's going to happen based on race, it's inequitable. And we all know we have achieved equity when we cannot predict based on a group membership what the outcome will be. And so I think, yeah, it's a part of an inquiry cycle of, first, I have to see race, see that there's a problem that is, race is a determinant factor in what happens. And then I have to start asking a bunch of other questions to figure out what's going on that's contributing to that being there. And I may identify something other than there's this racist person who's doing something. But it may be like what Martha was saying, the expectation is, the expectation that you have in the beginning is race-based. I imagine that if I wanted to make a standardized test that advantaged our Latino students, I would say that everyone had to take the test in Spanish. And then I would immediately see that who was on top of their scores would be totally reversed. But the choice that I only give the test in English or the choice that I have certain skills I think are more important than others, all that has to do. I had a friend stay with me this week, and he said that at his school where he teaches in Issaquah, they asked every teacher to, or each department, to write down what are the essential things that students need to know and be able to do. Then they pass it to another department and ask the teachers in that department, could they do it? And the teachers in the other department were like, "No, I can't do this math stuff or this science stuff." And so it's like, well, maybe this is not the stuff that you really need to be successful and have a positive and productive life if none of us can do that stuff anymore. I know I don't want to take the S back. I don't want anyone to see what that result may look like for me taking that now. So maybe it's cooked into some of the expectations as well. Final word, Raymond?
Huh. I agree with Norm. This, I mean, you did a good job of answering my questions. So I really appreciate that keeping, seeing race first as the problem, then asking questions. That's going to be very, very beneficial. I know that racism exists everywhere in all our institutions and even in the standardized testing. And I know with, we started out the book, the argument started with the results of the SAT, which many people think that is culturally biased as well. So, I mean, where do we start? Where do we critique? Where do we, I mean, we can critique everything, including the SAT, in that argument. So I'm just, like I said, this is just helping me to think a little bit more, go in a little deeper and kind of sort through some stuff, you know, within my role as a board member. So I appreciate Dr. Pipelton, and I really, really appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
Thank you. Don, what's your passage?
There are so many passages. And I think it's on, for me, page 100, where it talks about how common is it for the topic of race to surface during the examination of achievement data of students of color or indigenous students? And someone say, "Well, what about poverty?" Then someone else might say, "What about language?" Suddenly, the conversation loses focus around the challenge of race and is predictably redefined to any number of other diversity issues. And it was, this is piggybacking on what Raymond was saying about the data, how we focus on data. And then we always try to use something other than what the elephant in the room is, is race. And we change it to diversity or cultural diversity. You know, we've been going through this for a number of years, that buzzword. And now the real buzzword has hit, what about racial equity? Even in education and systematic racism. And we're, in the education piece, you know, we always want to look at the poverty piece. And I like the example that Dr. Pipelton just gave about what about if we formulate a a test in Spanish and give it to English-speaking students? And what about, you know, we take a test and find some slang and give it to some African-Americans? I guarantee you, it's going to be kind of skewed. And we just need to stick to the point of, "Hey, we got to hit this racial thing head-on" and not try to divert from it and just dig into it and accept it and expect and respect others' inability to see the racism and to see races within a system and to educate them and to work with them and to bring them along. And even in schools, just, you know, that testing piece. And I guarantee you that it would be higher in the native tongue of Spanish for those Spanish-speaking students. And some of the English-speaking students would be low. And let's be flexible and diverse. If you want to bring diversity, let's use that as a tool. Let's test these Spanish-speaking kids in their native tongue, in their native language, right? And let's find a way for, to reach those African-American students or those indigenous students in ways that they can relate to the testing that we are giving. And that's where I'm at.
Graciela?
I think that passage is really interesting. It makes me think that as a society, I guess it's a way to make the discussion around race a little bit more comfortable, to make it not about race. I think as a society, we're not really comfortable talking about, you know, what would be considered taboo subjects. Race is certainly one of those, politics, religion. So I think we're just, because of that, we're not able to have any kind of helpful, open-minded discussion around race. Whenever the topic comes up, we throw other things in there to make the conversation a little bit more comfortable and a little bit easier to have.
Thank you. Martha?
Sorry. There's a dog barking outside. I expect the kids to rouse anytime. I put a comment in the chat that I have long advocated that any kind of standardized testing, specifically in our state, is not necessarily a test of a student's core knowledge or subject familiarity. Instead, it's a test of how well they understand English. Because they first have to be able to understand the question or the prompt and then respond. And if if an assessment isn't offered in a way that students can relate and be able to share their knowledge of whatever the topic is, then you're never going to, a teacher or an assessor or whoever is never going to know how well that student understands whatever it is that they're testing.
Thank you. Norm?
Yeah, Don pointed out an interesting thing in the "what about-ism," because how immediately when we start to address race, we start talking about, "Well, what about poverty?" Or, "What about language?" When language is important, obviously, for everyone. But I'd say, if you recall the history in our district, I remember we probably spent hundreds of thousands, if not a million dollars or more, training everybody in the Ruby Pains culture of poverty. And a lot of people all around the country trained in culture of poverty, as though that was somehow going to address this issue because it diverted into the issue of poverty. And now, when we think about what actually came out of all that investment and all that time and all that work, I'm not even sure I see those big red notebooks on anybody's shelf anymore. And so I just wanted to say, I really think it was like a diversion in a sense, and it didn't really solve the problem. It may have dealt with some issues and given teachers some tools to relate to kids and to families, but it never addressed the issue of race. And so here we still are. And I think we need to, I'm so glad we're doing this work. I'm glad you're leading this work, Marcus, because I really think we need to address what that means in this community. And we need to meet it head-on. And we're going to get people that hit back at us. And, but still, I think that's an issue that it permeates our system. It permeates law enforcement, it permeates education, it permeates government. It's just, it's, it's still there. And I think, I think this is a nice step to start to address this issue. And maybe we don't need to spend millions of dollars, but we need to spend some time and effort into really looking at this and saying, "Is this going to get us to that next step where all kids are achieving and all kids really are achieving?" So.
Raymond?
Yes, I appreciate the quote, but I'm kind of in my mind thinking of the larger picture here. So, and I know there's, like I said, there is, I agree with this racism, and there's this interaction between those other factors. But I just can't help but think that if one really focuses on race being the determinant of the disparities or the cause of the disparities, then I would think that students of color and families are going to begin to think that they have no power, right? That because of the race, they can't be successful. They can't achieve. They can't do well in a school district. So I think that, you know, really, really focusing too much on that and not kind of getting a good balance takes away kind of getting a good balance takes away power from students of color. And so I'll go back to my question is, you know, to what extent is race an obstacle or the other factors an obstacle to student performance?
I think, I think that is an important quote. And I think that there is a lot of, you know, segue because, you know, when we talk about race based disparities, we naturally feel like we need to look at ourselves and our own behavior. And when we talk about other things like poverty, then we're looking outward and it's more comfortable. So I think it goes to kind of that first quote that Martha raised is that, you know, these other things are more comfortable to talk about. I'll say as a black man, when I see race based disparities, I always think it's because of racism and not because of something that I can't do. So if people are, if people in the field, in the work environment are starting to pay attention to those disparities, then I, gives me a sense that they're going to start to work on changing the conditions. Because I recognize that, you know, there are some challenges that are cooked into the system. So I'm not sure that, you know, by talking about race, we make it so that people feel hindered. I think that it's when we don't acknowledge those things that people feel like it's helpless because nobody even sees really what's going on. But Don, you get the last word.
Well, Dr. Pimplton, you said it all for me. Because I, I believe that if we don't talk about race, we won't empower the people of color, the minorities, the red, the brown, the yellow. When I was growing up in Louisiana, we had a saying, if you're black, get back. If you're brown, stick around. If you, if you're yellow, you're mellow. But if you're bright, you're all right. And, and, but what I'm saying is, we, we have to, we have to hit this head on. And race does play a, a, a big part of this. And, and if we don't, it's not giving, it's, it's giving you power to, to, to love who you are and, and to, to, to be who you are, right? And, and to, and it empowers you because now you know, and, and I'm a black man. And, and, and I get looks, I get different reactions, but I know the signs and the symptoms, right? And, and it's okay. I don't want to be normalized under the condition of white culture anymore. I want to know my culture. I want to receive my culture. And that empowers me to educate myself and to receive that education and to strive and to work hard. And I think that's what it will do for others by knowing that race is a factor, but you can overcome that racism.
So I think I need to stop there, right? So I won't get to Graciela's quote unforcibly, but we'll go to the next chapter and we'll just start with Graciela on the next chapter with whatever activity we're doing. So I will email the activity to Martha and Martha will email it out to you. But you should definitely read about the third condition, which is engaging multiple racial perspectives. And so part of that is recognizing our own, but making sure that we're engaging with others who have a different background and experience. One of the beautiful things about this board is the diversity of the board that we have with the different perspectives that you have.
Marcus, I'm wondering if we could just, if we could just have Graciela start the next time with this question, and then she gets two shots at it next time.
Okay, you the president, so.
Well, I'm going back, I'm going back to what I said last week. We don't have enough time for these to get through the whole thing. So, but we do have, we do need to, to stop and take about five minute break before we start with the business, with the meeting at 4:30. I saw Principal Bell come in and she'll be back. Olivia's here and Carrie Pitts is here. So we're just gonna, we're just gonna pause for about five minutes and we'll be back at 4:30. It's 4:30. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have a very special guest with us today from Robertson Elementary. And I am going to ask Principal Bell Davis to introduce our guest.
Hello, everyone. It is so wonderful to see your faces and to not be on the live stream wanting to jump into the conversation. So yes, I'm here, proud principal of Robertson Elementary. I'm so, so proud to be here. I'm happy that you invited us. And I need to introduce you to an amazing young lady. Let me tell you something. Olivia Jackson is amazing. And the reason why she is, I'm going to tell you, I got here to an empty school. I didn't know anyone. I didn't know the community. And there was a gift in my office in the first days of school. It was this pillow. It's a rocket pillow. And the reason why this pillow is so important to me is because when I was a young girl in boarding school, I just fell in love with my favorite pillow and I still have it. But I've never had a work pillow. So now, thank you, Olivia, for this. I greatly appreciate it. I would like to share with you some words that she shared with me, if you don't mind. Please tell me thumbs up, you don't mind. This is the letter that she wrote. All right. Hello, Principal Bell Davis, and welcome to Robertson. My name is Olivia Jackson and I'm a fourth grader this year. I just want to tell you how Robertson is an amazing school and you are going to enjoy your time teaching here. Thank you, because I will always be a teacher first. Yes. To start, the teachers are fun, creative, and they teach us to be leaders. Second, the students are hard workers. They never give up and they love to learn. For all of these reasons I stated, this is why Robertson is an amazing school. I can't wait to meet you. Sincerely, Olivia. I just want, I'm sending you virtual hugs, Olivia. Thank you so much. Thank you for just honoring, learning and teaching in the school. And thank you for showing me that despite the fact that we don't get to meet face to face, we can still build those connections. So I greatly appreciate it. Olivia, are you ready to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I'm ready. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Olivia. That was wonderful. I'm going to apologize in advance because my four-legged security team has gone on alert. There's a dog walking outside of my fence and they're keying on that. Anyway, thank you, Olivia. That was wonderful. You did a great job. And thank you especially for being such a welcome committee for Ms. Bell Davis. I can, I can only imagine how wonderful that was to walk into your office that very first day and find a welcome gift as sweet as that pillow is. Did you make the pillow?
Yes, I have a sewing machine and I like to sew stuff. So I'm like, why not sew a new pillow for our new principal?
You are amazing. What an amazing young woman you are. I'm going to let the rest of the board make any comments or ask you any questions. Is that all right? Okay, board members?
Hi, Olivia. This is Levin Davis. I thank you for that beautiful pledge. And what is it that you are aspiring to be as you grow? What field of work would you, are you going into?
I'm planning on being a teacher like my mom.
Well, you know.
In elementary.
All right, Olivia, I know you're going to do it. And not only a teacher, but you're going to wind up being a superintendent of a school district and maybe the Yakima School District. You're right. And keep up the great work. I'm proud of you. And it is so nice to see a young person in fourth grade knows what their desire is and to go back and to teach. And God bless you, Olivia.
Thank you.
Hi, hi, Olivia. My name is Graciela. You did a really good job today. Thank you for being here. What's, what's your favorite thing to make with your sewing machine?
With my sewing machine, I mostly make pillows because they're really fun. I love to play with the stuffing.
Fun. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Yes, Olivia, this is Raymond. I just wanted to say thank you for being with us today and leading us in the pledge of allegiance. Thank you for your leadership. I know you're going to be an awesome teacher because I know you're, you're very smart and you get along with people. But more importantly, you care and you're considerate about other people. So that'll go a long ways in helping you to be very successful. A lot of, a lot of kids, a lot of students, you know, they want to be successful and they will be, but they oftentimes don't focus on the heart, right? And caring for others. So I really appreciate you and you demonstrating that, you know, being the welcome committee, as, as Martha had mentioned, for our new principal. So thank you once again and great success in your future.
Hi, hi, Olivia. This is Norm Walker. I'd like to thank you also for coming today. And I know a little bit about sewing myself. My wife is a major sewer and makes her own clothes. So maybe someday you'll progress beyond pillows and learn how to, to be a fashion designer. So you never know how far that sewing stuff can take you. But anyway, enjoy it for now and, and thanks for being with us today.
Olivia, you're welcome to stay. We're going to get on with the rest of our business. And you probably have homework or something that's calling to you. So if you, if you log off, we're, we will understand. But I want to again, thank you for being here. You have been a light at the beginning of this meeting for us and set us on the right path today.
Thank you for inviting me. This has been a big honor to be here and I absolutely love you guys. You are incredible. And I, I just had to say, I think you guys are the most intelligent, smart people I've ever met.
You haven't gotten to know us very well then. Thank you, Olivia. You are a delight. You are an absolute delight.
Sound like meeting adjourned?
That was enough. I'm done.
Thank you, Olivia.
It was a pleasure to meet you.
You take care, okay? Okay. That was, that was a lot of fun. We're going to call the roll. Jennifer, could you call the roll, do a roll call, please?
Donald Davis Jr.
Here.
Graciela Villanueva.
Here.
Martha Rice.
Here.
Raymond Navarro Jr.
Here.
Norm Walker.
Here.
Thank you, Jennifer. We are still under the governor's emergency proclamation. On January 15th, the legislature passed Senate Concurrent Resolution 8402, extending the governor's emergency proclamation, including proclamation 20-28, until the termination of the state of emergency pursuant to RCW 43.06.210, or until rescinded by gubernatorial or legislative action, whichever occurs first. What, what this means is that we will continue to be, we will continue, they're smart. They hide around the corner and bark. And they know that the little sprayer can't reach around a corner. What this means is that we will continue to be in remote status with our meetings, no in-person meetings. And unfortunately, there, we will, we will not have public comment at our meetings because of this resolution. Any member of the public who is present or wishes to reach out to board members can do so via email at, at our district email addresses or to the superintendent. So we will move now to the rest of our agenda. Okay, we have two approvals and then we'll move into the superintendent's COVID-19 report, okay? The first approval is for permission to contract with Paper Education Company, Inc. in the amount of $297,500. Dr. Darling, are you kicking this off? Or Trevor, do you want to introduce the topic first?
We'll go straight to Dr. Darling. Rob?
Good evening, school board. Appreciate the chance to be here with you tonight. So one of the, one of the components that's been difficult in remote learning is students having access to teacher support outside of the, of the workday. Because students are joining, they're learning multiple times during the day. Sometimes they might have a question, but they don't have access to their teacher for another hour or two hours or until the next day. And the worst thing is a student to feel like you can't move forward with a project or a, or a learning segment because you don't know what the next steps are and you can't have, you don't have any support, whether it be at home or whether it be a problem that's too difficult for a parent at home to help with. I know that as my students were in high school, I couldn't help them with their homework any longer. So I can imagine the frustrations our students are feeling, having to do this at home and not having a trigonometry expert sitting next to them. And so we've been searching and vetting multiple opportunities to try and figure out how we can best provide some support for our students, but in a safe manner where we know they're going to be, there are safeguards in place to protect them from components that are outside of our control. So tonight we were asking for request to start a tutoring, a 24-hour a day, seven days a week tutoring service available in English and Spanish for our fifth through 12th grade students. And this service gives students the opportunity to log in, you know, logs into their class schedule and whatever class they need help with. They click on that class schedule and it provides them an actual educator to be online with them one-on-one. So students can communicate via chat. So there's no video conferencing and there's no audio involved because those are two safety features. We really were concerned about having our students be one-on-one with somebody and having that sort of a, a security level in place. And so one of the reasons why we chose this model is because we have certificated teachers who are working virtually with the students. So the student can share a problem they're working on. They can use an interactive whiteboard and then, and then these educators are trained in the Socratic methods. They don't give students the answer. They help the students continue to go through a problem until they, they arrive to the answer. These sessions are recorded, so the teachers can see them, the parents can see them, the students come back and access them as well. So they have this constant measure of continued support throughout. And as I said, it's available in English or Spanish, regardless of what content area it is. And so we're asking for this contract to be awarded to Paper Education Company, which is actually a Google-owned company, for the amount of $297,500. This will be a 12-month contract, so it'll start now and it'll go till this time next February unless we decide to extend it.
Do board members have any questions for Dr. Darling? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for permission to contract with Paper Education Company, Inc. in the amount of $297,500.
So move.
Moved by Norm, seconded by Don. Is there any discussion?
Just, just, I do have one question. Is the, is the funding for this coming, do we have CARES money or federal money that's going to help support this additional cost? Or is it coming out of our general fund? Or how are we, how are we paying for this and the next one?
We'll be using CARES funds to reimburse this cost.
Okay.
I want to thank you, staff, for being a little forward-thinking and making sure that of the tutoring needs for our students. being a little forward-thinking and making sure that all the tutoring needs for our students are, they have an opportunity to access tutors. I think that's really going to make a difference for a lot of our kids. Is there, is there other discussion? If not, Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Donald Davis, Jr.
Aye.
Graciela Villanueva.
Yes.
Martha Rice.
Aye.
Raymond Navarro, Jr.
Aye.
Norm Walker.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you all. The second approval is for permission to contract with Edgenuity, Inc. In the amount of $405,000. Dr. Darling?
Thank you. So this is for our Yakima online program. It serves our middle school and high school students that want a fully online education. We purchase, we purchase basically credits through them. And we purchased enough last year that we thought it was going to last us for a while. Well, we had such an uptake in our enrollment for Yakima online this year due to COVID that we needed to reimburse, we needed to update the amount that we were using. And so we were fortunate that they, the company was able to honor the price that we used last year that we made our initial purchase at and enough to get us through the next two years. So we're asking the board that we grant permission to contract with Edgenuity with the amount of $405,000 in order to provide instruction for Yakima online students.
Are there any questions from board members? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for permission to contract with Edgenuity, Inc. In the amount of $405,000.
So move.
Second.
Move by Dawn, seconded by Norm. Is there any discussion? If there is none, Jennifer, would you call the roll, please?
Sure. Donald Davis, Jr.
Aye.
Graciela Villanueva.
Aye.
Martha Rice.
Aye.
Raymond Navarro, Jr.
Aye.
Norm Walker.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you all. Uh, next item on the agenda is the superintendent's COVID-19 update.
Thank you, President Rice. I am excited tonight to present again with us. We have Jewel Brumley, our COVID response team data specialist, along with Stacy Locke, who will be sharing updated information. I did work with, had a special request for Jewel this week to start monitoring the, and projecting really what the peak line would be. And that's something that is new for us is to project where we could end up with the declining cases based on what we've seen previously. So I look forward to that update and without further ado, I'll turn it over to Jewel Brumley.
Thank you, Superintendent Green. So our daily paces, as you can see, are going down. We're, we're kind of playing the heart attack thing right now. We go from, you know, 60 to 184 to 80 to 152. So, but overall it's still declining. So that's a good thing. This is overall since May. As you can see, we've had several different peaks. And, you know, we're still in that heart line type race of up and down. Our cases per 100,000 over the last 14 days has really dropped. So we're at 567 for the last two weeks and that ended yesterday for the two weeks before. The rate in our South Central region, this is based on before yesterday because that's how I can get it from the state. Trevor shared with me the, the new thing DOH in Yakima put out. But Yakima is down to, to 567, not 630. But Kitata has dropped, Benton County, Franklin County, Wallowala County and Columbia County are all going down. So that's, that's a good thing. This is our ZIP code data and again, our ZIP codes have gone down. So we're running anywhere from 500 as our high in the, in three of the ZIP codes to, you know, 400s. And actually 98903 Union Gap is at 398 for the last week in ZIP code data, two weeks. Hospitalizations have again continued to drop. We're down averaging in the high twenties and 30, but that's a, that's a real drop. So that's a good thing, too. Uh, hospitalizations in the region have dropped. We're at 29. Benton Franklin County is at 49, which is below what they were at before. Wallowala was at four, they're up to nine. And then as a region, we've dropped 29%. Our test positivity, we're at 22% right now. Well, actually in the region, we're at 22% and Yakima, we're at 26%. We're still dropping. So here's the ones as of Saturday. Or Friday night, Saturday, I picked them up Saturday. So we're at 26. Kitata is at 10. You know, Benton County is close to 20%. Overall, as a South Central region, we're at 22, so. This is what I worked on all weekend. Was doing regression calculations on, on a multi-linear variable of our data. The blue line is our data that is weekly since May. The black line, I started it on, on last week. And that's the projected course with the regression statistics I've used. I tried two different regression statistics. This is about an 80% confidence level. And it projected us to be at, when I get the data that they post today at five, at 598 per 100,000. And what Superintendent Green emailed me this morning from the Department of Health was 567 per 100,000. So that's still within, within the ballpark of the projection. This projection takes us out until March 29th. I would be fairly confident in, in saying that I anticipate when the state goes back to checking our, our region, which is next week, in the middle of the week, they will check the regions again data to see if they meet three of the four metrics. And we're meeting two of the metrics right now. I would anticipate that we would move to phase two. Next week, they would declare that we could move to phase two and it would take effect February 15th. That's what I anticipate based on these projections.
Thank you, Jewel, especially for this projected forecast. We have been very aggressively looking at the potential spikes during the time that we are not in session. And this is the first time that we've started projecting what the decline could be. So I appreciate that and to know that your assessment is that we would be into phase two relatively soon. You're, you have proven to be very skilled at what you do in putting forth the information in a way that is both comprehensible but also accurate. So having you with us is certainly a benefit and thinking about by mid-March, having that number down into a phase two is phenomenal. So thank you for that information tonight. Does anybody have a question for Jewel before we move to Stacy? All right. And again, Jewel, thank you. I, I know it took a lot of work this weekend hearing you say that. So it's not just throwing some lines there on the, on the page, but really looking at what it takes and projecting everything out in a scientific manner. So great, very grateful for that. And now we're going to have the internal update of what's happening with our schools and what we're looking like as far as our COVID monitoring here in our district. And for that, I'll bring our Assistant Superintendent Stacy Locke.
Thank you, Superintendent Green. Good evening, Board of Directors. What I'd like to report for last week is we had 27 contact and contact tracing and case investigations. And that resulted in nine positive cases within our district. For the month of January so far, we've had 35 positive cases, 23 negative cases, and then we still have 14 cases that are pending a result. When we look at our testing for the month of January, we did 261 total tests. We had four positive, five unable to process. In other words, they didn't get the right amount of swab time for the oral PCR test. And we had 252 negative cases for the month of January.
Thank you, Stacy. And we're doing the, the swabs, the opportunities for staff is, is still continuing. And what, what are the days, just as a reminder out there, if we have any staff members that are watching?
You bet. We're, we're still covering the COVID hotline. Worked on some cases and some contact tracing this weekend that went through three different schools with family members and ended up in a positive case. So I mean, that is working. We additionally are testing asymptomatic COVID testing at every school site on Monday and Tuesday, as well as testing on Wednesday at central services and the professional library.
All right. Are there any questions for, for Stacy?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Back to you, Martha.
Thank you, Trevor. I want to thank Jewel and Stacy for keeping us current on this. The numbers that you provide us are extremely helpful and I don't know that, I know that I couldn't have found them any other way except through your presentation. So this will really help the board as we get down the road and get to the place where we have to make decisions about coming back to school and all those sorts of things. So thank you very much. I, I know that it's an extra bit of work to prepare your presentations for these meetings and, and I really appreciate all the effort that you put into this. So thanks for being here. Next item on the agenda is a review of board policy 1,000.3.2 Board Job Description. Do I have a board member who would volunteer to lead this?
Sure, I can. The board, did I unmute myself? Yes. The board job description outlines what our duties are as, as board members. The key function and job of the board is to represent the key community and lead the organization by determining and requiring appropriate and excellent organizational performance. Acting on behalf of the people in our community, we fulfill the following functions. Responsible governance. The board with participation by the community envisions the future for the school district's educational program and formulates goals, defines outcomes and sets the course for this school district. This is done taking into consideration gender, race, ethnicity, creed, religion, color, national origin, sexual orientation, gender expression and identity and mental and physical disability. The board is committed to educational excellence and justice for all students. The board employs and evaluates a superintendent. In fact, that's the board's most important job to hire, supervise, to hire, supervise and evaluate the superintendent. The board is committed to excellence in governance and strives to implement best practices which are aligned with relevant school board professional association standards. Standards. We create conditions for student and staff success. To achieve its vision, the board establishes a structure which reflects local circumstances and creates an environment designed to ensure that all students have the opportunity to attain their maximum potential through a sound organizational framework. This includes employing the superintendent, developing and approving policies, formulating budgets, setting high instructional and learning goals for staff and students and nurturing a climate conducive to continuous improvement. Item three, high expectations for student learning. The board continuously articulates the belief that all students can learn and that each student's learning can improve regardless of existing circumstances or resources. The board acts as leaders of a vision of shared learning that is supported by individual schools and the community. We, the board establishes written governing policies and categories that address the broadest levels of all organizational decisions and situations, ends goals, organizational products, impacts, benefits, outcomes, recipients and the relative worth. The end goal, end, ends goals, policies tell what end results are desired for whom and at what cost. Executive limitations, constraints on the superintendent's authority which establish their prudence and ethics, boundaries within which all executive activity and decisions must be, must take place. Governance process, specification of how the board conceives, carries out and monitors its own task. Board superintendent linkage, how power is delegated and its proper use is monitored. The superintendent's role, authority and accountability. Accountability for staff learning. The board's accountability for student learning includes adopting a system of continuous assessment of all conditions affecting education, including assessments for measuring staff and student progress towards goals. The public will be kept informed about programs and progress. Staff and board training is provided to ensure continuous improvement of student achievement. Community engagement. The board serves as education's key advocate on behalf of students in their schools. The board works to advance the community's vision for its schools to pursue the district's goal to encourage progress, to energize systemic change and to ensure that students are treated as whole persons in a diversified society. The board serves as a link between community ownership in the district by reflecting the community's ownership, priorities and values and the goals and objectives of the district and governing in a manner transparent to the community owners of the district. To distinguish the board's own unique job from the jobs of the superintendent and staff, the board engages itself in these functions. The board defines and requires demonstration of accountability for successful organizational performance on ends, goals and executive limitations. The board initiates its parameters for valid issues and communicate the rationale for these measures to the community. The board advocates for the district and the students it serves, including legislative awareness of the district's financial and other needs. The board attends graduation ceremonies, honors convocation and other important district and community functions.
Thank you, Graciela. Are there any comments from board members?
Yes, Martha, I'm just wondering on section number two, creating conditions for student and staff success. I'm wondering if that should be changed. I'm re, I'm referring to the vision, right? It says to achieve its vision. So I'm thinking that it's referring to a board's vision and not the district. So I don't know, I'm just thinking, do we change that to say the district's vision? I don't know, just something that.
You think we should?
That's what I'm kind of thinking about right now. Because we don't have, the board doesn't have a vision necessarily.
Yes, up above it says we set the vision for the district. So I guess I, I would, I interpret that as the board's vision is the district's vision.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. The board's vision is the district's vision.
Does that answer your question, Raymond? Okay. Are there any other comments? Do we need to make any other, any adjustments to this policy? Okay. Jennifer, you'll send this to the survey monkey and Wendy, would you like the responses back?
By Friday, please.
By Friday, please.
Okay, all right. We will take care of that. And then, the next agenda item is a review of Board Policy 1000.3.3 Agenda Planning. Do I have a volunteer to lead us through that?
I can do that.
Thank you Norm.
I will try to where I can, not read totally word for word, but just hit the main points if possible. Okay. Agenda Planning: To accomplish its work products with a governance style consistent with Board policies, the Board of Directors will follow an annual agenda which examines student achievement as defined by our ends and goals policies, examines organizational performance as defined by executive limitations policies, improves the Board performance through Board Education. And as ends, goals, policies are reviewed, each policy will be amended to align with its strategic plan. Okay, Section One, the Board's annual planning cycle will conclude each year on the last day of October. Number two, the cycle will start with the Board's development of its agenda for the next year. And Sections Under Two, the annual planning calendar will include consultations with selected groups in the community or other methods of gaining community input. 2.2, Board Development and Training Designed to Improve the Board's Ability to Perform the Work Identified in the Board's Job Description, Including Governance Education, Education Related to Ends Goals, Such as Presentations by Futurists, Demographers, etc. 2.3, Scheduled Monitoring Reports That Will Be Included on the Agenda. And 2.4, Superintendent Contract Renewal and Conditions to Be Decided After Review of Monitoring Reports Received During the Prior 12 Months.
Thank you Norm. Are there any comments from Board Members? Are there any parts of this that we need to adjust? Okay. Seeing no comments or questions from Board Members, we're going to submit this to the Survey Monkey and it will be due on Friday, Jennifer, correct? Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Next item on the agenda are items of Board Interest. Do Board Members have any items that they would like to bring to the Board for information?
Martha, I have a couple of items.
Sure.
So I know the NSBA Annual Conference is coming up. So I'd like to see if I can get registered for that. I know it's going to be April 8th through the 10th. It's going to be a virtual conference, which is going to be, I'm looking forward to doing that. Also, I was invited by the League of Education Voters to participate. And one of their listening sessions, it's called a Listening Session from Voices from the Latino Community this Thursday, but it's a short notice and I just, I don't think I'm going to be able to do it. But that's something I would probably do in the future with more of that notice. I just wanted to praise the Board of that time to engage in that type of discussion in our community.
Thank you Raymond. We... I'm not sure how to go about approval for a virtual conference that's out of state. I know we approve out-of-state travel. We're not traveling. And so, let's see, when do we, when do we meet next? Next week Jennifer?
Monday, and then again for the business meeting on the 16th.
Okay. Is there a date by which we are out of the early bird registration? Raymond, do you know? Don, do you know?
No, I haven't gotten that far.
But I would like to also be registered for that. I'll find out though while we're in this meeting.
Okay, maybe you guys could check the website or something for the deadline for the early registration. And if it's, if it's after next Monday, which is the 8th, maybe we could approve this on the 8th just to be, just so that...
It's by the 26th.
6th of February? Okay, good, thank you Jennifer. Are you comfortable with it? Go ahead.
Yes Martha, and also Reverend Davis and I have always been part of the Black and Hispanic Caucus. And so I know those are extra, extra fees. So I just wanted to present that to the Board as well. I would like to continue with that work as well.
Same here.
Okay.
As well as Cube.
All right. Let's, let's put this on the agenda for next Monday, okay? And I don't, I don't foresee that there's an issue with it. But we have a kind of an unspoken rule that we're, we won't make a decision on something when it's brought to us for the, right at that meeting. So if it's okay with you guys, we will put it on the agenda for next Monday. Is that, is that all right Don?
Yeah, I just...
Don, I'm having trouble hearing you, so...
It says register now in the 2020, 2021, 2021. And it says register now and the Equity Online Symposium is February 10th, 2021. But we're talking about the...
Right.
So early bird is the 26th of February.
Yeah, so the deadline for early bird registration is not till the end of this month. So...
Yeah.
We'll just, if, we'll just put that on the agenda for next, for next Monday. And the Equity Symposium is free this year. So all you have to do is just go online to register for that. There's no, there's no cost for that one. Okay, are there any other items of Board Interest? I did have, what, Don?
No, it's Norm.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, Norm?
Well, I just wondered if you were planning on addressing this as part of a legislative report. Part of last week's WASDA webinar addressed specifically House Bill 1226 and advocating for that. Were you going to address that in your report?
You know, I have such trouble with bill numbers.
Okay, that's the one, the simple majority for bonds.
I wasn't necessarily, because I didn't listen in on that hearing.
Okay.
Did you listen in to the hearing?
Well, I listened in. What WASDA provided was some talking points about supporting that particular bill. It's still in committee right now. I don't know, it's going to emerge sometime, maybe within the next month. But kind of the, it's the rationale kind of for supporting that. Do you want to hear that now or should we discuss that at a later date?
No, we can talk about it now because I was just going to do a legislative report next. So go ahead.
Okay, well, the WASDA position is, there are several things. One of the things that a lot of times communities see bond, bond issues as a tax increase. They immediately interpret it as a tax increase and it's often framed that way. Well, you can, there are different ways to frame that. One is, it's a way for communities to invest in themselves. And very often, bonds replace retiring bonds. And so it isn't necessarily a tax increase. It's often just maintaining the status quo in terms of what comes out of somebody's property taxes. So that's one way to frame it. It isn't automatically a tax increase. The second thing that is in favor of it is construction projects support local economies. Construction projects hire people, pay people, they give boost to local economies. And especially when you, when you hire companies and agencies within your community. So they can be very beneficial to a community. And the third rationale is, this is a great time to make improvements to facilities as we prepare to return to in-person learning. That it is less disruptive right now if we can, if these opportunities come up or within the near future to, to really make some improvements to facilities. Another rationale is, as with other things, simple majority reflects the will of the community. And that's an old argument that I'm sure gets fought over and over and over. And there's certain sides of the political spectrum that think that anytime you have to do something that's financially difficult, you have to get to two-thirds majority. Well, what happened to simple majority in democracy? And the last one is, around the state, and I don't know if this reflects our position, but that's something that, that Trevor and his team would certainly know is that there are many projects out there that are currently, as they quote, shovel-ready. I mean, they're essentially ready to go. And if the more quickly they can get funding, they can be completed. And of course, we all know, the sooner you complete projects, when you delay projects, then the cost can double in five years or 10 years of what it takes to do a project. So there's some things really, some really good rationale behind supporting this bill in terms of improving facilities in a district. So just wanted to throw that out there that, that we, our legislators tend to be on the end of the spectrum that views those kinds of things as tax increases. And maybe we need to present our legislators with some of the other thoughts that it isn't just simply a tax increase, that it really benefits the community to have some of these things happen. So just wanted to toss that out there.
Thank you for sharing that Norm. Do you have those written down that you could share with the rest of us in the form of an email or something?
Actually, that probably would be available, those talking points would be available through WASDA. I think it's if on their advocacy section, I haven't looked at that. Those are the notes I took down, but I'm pretty sure those talking points are in the advocacy part of the WASDA website.
I'll look and see if I can find them.
Yeah.
I do know that all policy bills have to be out of their original committee by the, I think it's the 15th. So if it's going to get a hearing, it's going to be pretty quick. It is a bill that is sponsored by April Berg, who is a new legislator from the Everett area. She also is still serving on the Everett School Board. And Representative Monica Stonier, who is from the Vancouver area. It's getting, it's getting a lot of attention. So this may be, this may be the time to strike. It will require, I think, two-thirds vote by the legislature and then it goes to the public because it's a constitutional change. So if it gets passed out of the legislature, it will be, we will be in for a fight with the general public. But I think we're ready for that. It's a question of fairness and it's a question of really the quality of the, of the buildings that our students are educated in. When we have buildings that are 50, 75, 100 years old, the, we know well that the infrastructure within those buildings leaves a lot to be desired. I did testify last week on the LAP funding bill. I did that Friday morning. It seemed to be well-received. I didn't get any questions. So either they didn't pay attention or they were completely on board. So I don't know, time will tell. I don't believe that it has been exact out yet to the financial, the fiscal committee. So, so we'll see where that goes. I did get a call this morning and was asked to testify on bill, what is it? No, I can't find it now. It's a bill that has to do with, I think the number's 1382. It is asking that the co-pay for reduced-priced lunches be paid for by the district. And there is a fiscal note that would be about $8 million out of the state budget. We know that because of our CEP status, how many more kids we're feeding than, when we're in person than we were before we were, we were a CEP district. And there's, and we also know that there's a lot of... It's, it's, there's a lot of challenges for high school kids to remember or to have that out there that they're getting free lunch or reduced-priced lunch. But we also know that in, in today's economy, more and more of our students are, when we, when we get back to either hybrid or full in-person, many of our families are struggling economically. And so this would certainly be of benefit to those families. That testimony is, is in front of the House Appropriations Committee tomorrow at 3:30. So that's where I'll be tomorrow afternoon at 3:30. And I'll also be sitting in on the NSBA Equity Symposium next week. I did get registered for that. I don't recall, it's like four hours in the middle of the day or something for us. But I'm looking forward to that. Trevor, do you have any items of Board Interest for us?
Nothing at this time. However, we have things that will be coming up pretty soon for us to share with Board Interest. So thank you for that opportunity.
Okay. We've reached the end of today's agenda. Do we have a need for executive session?
We do have a need for executive session, suggested 45 minutes.
For the purpose of?
Potential litigation. And pending litigation.
People don't have anything better to do than to sit home and think about litigation. Okay, we do have a need for executives, executive session for 45 minutes for the purpose of potential impending litigation. Do I have a motion to move into executive session?
So move.
By Raymond?
Second.
Seconded by Don. Jennifer, could you call the roll please?
Donald Davis Jr.?
Yes.
Graciela Vinaueva?
Yes.
Martha Rice?
Aye.
Raymond Navarro Jr.?
Aye.
Norm Walker?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.